All right, good evening. Whoa. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 1st school committee meeting. If you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Start by reading our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemonster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education at Lemonster. Start with the public comment. Does anybody like to address the committee? You can come up, use the microphone in front.
If I may, just so we understand that Christine Silverman is not with us. Josh, would you mind timing for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Perfect, just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Phil Valeri. I live at 639 Mechanic Street. I wanted to address the recent locking of bathrooms. The systematic lockdown of the school that occurred about two and a half weeks ago prior to the break. Specifically Lemonster High. My understanding, foreknowledge of this is I have several friends who are seniors. I graduated in 2020. And I just wanted to say, ever since I left Lemonster High, there has been a systematic locking of access to bathrooms for students. Because I have vivid memory of needing to go to the C Wing all the way to the cafeteria because the E-Wing bathroom was constantly being locked. And I have heard stories that, besides the one day where they instituted a kind of escort system, as far as my understanding is, that was wildly unpopular and they didn't continue with it. But regardless of that system, prior to it, there's been a systematic locking of bathrooms, and it has not been addressed. And I have proof that Brandon Robbins, Superintendent Deacon, Eileen, and Ronald Houli have all received and responded to me on a previous email from August 17th of last year about this very issue. So I just wanted to kind of ask, when is this going to be addressed in a really serious manner with respect to the health of student safety? You know, and their health broadly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
And I just wanted to tag on with Phil. I wanted just to say Dr. Yodi Sangara, quote, stated-
Can you just state your street name? You don't need your specific address.
Street brought in Harvard. Quote, stigma around menstruation and menstrual hygiene is a violation of several human rights, most importantly of the rights to human dignity, but also the right to nondiscrimination, equality, bodily integrity, health, privacy, and the right to freedom from inhumane and degrading treatment from abuse and violence, unquote. I'll spare you from reading through volumes of research on the harms of harboring toxic waste in the bowel, constipation complications, kidney, and not frequently attending to menstruation. How many of you need permission to use the bathroom when nature calls? You or any of you? Bathrooms should be available now. Your educators teaching high school age how to solve problems. Just lock the doors, just ask them to ask for a key. That's not a solution. Make bathrooms available now. If you're having problems with persons acting out or smoking or vaping or skipping class or bullying, solve those specific issues. There are consequences to smoking on school property. Deal with it. It should not be allowed. It's not healthy and it's not setting a good example for good, honest students who do their best from using the bathroom when nature calls is wrong. Hold individuals accountable. That's your job in this environment. Get a monitor, use some of the $2-plus billion dollars that Massachusetts received from Essar to have and hire substitute teachers to monitor the bathrooms. They probably need the income. Have you ever had a period?
Two minutes.
Sometimes, I'm just almost in conclusion. Sometimes you don't know it's coming. You have an urgency to take care of it and you're hindering natural urgencies by locking the bathrooms and making them unavailable.
Two minutes.
Barrett, next, two minutes.
Exclusion. You need to have time available. And by the way, listen to those who have real problems from this unnecessary lockdown. And for female privacy and safety, put a penis on the door for those-
We need to keep it to two minutes. Everybody gets equal time. Thank you. Anybody else in person would like to address the committee? Anybody online? I have one email that was sent in that I'll read from Mary Cafarella, a parent of a graduating senior. "I'm upset that the senior class had taken a vote by the class asking if they wanted to wear all blue caps and gowns or choose if they wanted to wear blue or white caps and gowns. The class voted for blue or white and were recently told their vote does not matter and everyone will be in blue. I feel that the voice of students needs to be heard and respected. Let them choose what colors to wear. Thank you for listening." Mary Cafarella, parent of senior class of 2023. Anybody else in person? One more time online? All right, and we'll close the public comment. Communication, Superintendent?
There are no communications this evening.
Student report, Matt?
So AP exams are happening this week and next week. Math MCAS is coming up in two weeks. I just took the AP Gov exam today. Think I killed it personally. Another great, another great season for LHS Sports, too. LHS is one of the eight teams in the inaugural Girls' Flag Football League to set up. It's cool to, yeah, set up with the support of the New England Patriots. LHS scored the first touchdown and got the first interception in the league in their 12-0 victory over Pittsburgh High. It's like, it's even better that it's Pittsburgh, obviously. Boys volleyball is dominating their league and are in first place with a 10-1 record. Track, baseball, softball, tennis, and lacrosse are having good seasons as well. Band had their spring concert at City Hall last week. The jazz band, concert band, and percussion ensemble all performed. Life Skills Program also had their annual talent show Friday before vacation. And the junior and senior classes had a guest speaker, Ty Sells, who spoke about just basically living responsibly. Spoke about tons of different, you know, topics, just about general health. And, yeah, it was a really good, he was really funny. It was like, it was really enjoyable. I really liked it. National Honor Society inductions is Thursday, May 4th at 7:00 PM at the high school. NHS also ran a blood drive at LHS on Friday. The senior schedule of activities has been posted to the LHS website. It's a good time to be a senior with prom this Saturday at Wachusett Mountain. The Senior Walk, Senior Awards Night on June 1st, the Senior Barbecue on June 2nd, and graduation on June 3rd. Finally, the school committee rep elections preparation are complete and they should be held by the next school committee meeting. So I should have an update for you about that by then. If any of you would like any additional information, please let me know. And now I will do the CTI School Committee Report. Good evening, everyone. It is Happy College Decision Day. It is my pleasure to say that our seniors have 33 days left until graduation. The Center for Technical Education is doing fantastic as always. The equipment continues to arrive for various regional shops. We thank our Superintendent Paula Deacon and Melanie for providing CTI with extra funding. New chairs and workstations were installed in our drafting CAD shop, allowing for consistency for the shop students. Thanks to our electrical and plumbing department, the health concern in the culinary shop regarding outlets that stuck 18 inches off the floor, causing a trip hazard, was corrected and fixed. Electrical worked mainly on the outlets and plumbing filled the holes with exposed pipes. The Students of Health Occupations Program are taking their skills CNA test on May 17th. As of students who took the written CNA test, have 100% passed. Good luck to our future healthcare workers. Our Skills USA Program sent three students to a state competition this weekend. Unfortunately, our students did not win a medal, but the two club advisors, Mr. Antonetti and Ms. Marshand expressed students represented LHS and CTI quite well. Congratulations to Coach Antonetti, our fellow electronics teacher and head coach of the Boys Varsity Volleyball Team for qualifying for the playoffs, placing first district-wide. The annual CTI Advisory Awards Dinner is Thursday, May 11th, starting at 5:30 PM in the Lemonster High School cafeteria. We honor our top seniors from each shop at this special event. Also on May 16th and 17th, senior projects slash presentations will occur during MCAS testing. Lastly, CTI would like to bring attention to Mike Cook and Alex Scipiani for taking their students to help with the escort and assembly to the Fallen Heroes Memorial Wall at the Johnny Rowe Veterans Memorial Park. Thank you to all CTI volunteers.
Excellent.
Great, thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions? Clearly, a lot of great stuff going on.
They cover it.
Awesome. All right, Superintendent, budget?
Yes, if I could ask Melanie to step forward? At this point, if there's anyone that has comments around the budget hearing?
So if anybody has come, because tonight is the public hearing on the budget and would like to speak, we'll open up that portion now.
We want to hold the slides up for informational purposes. We can do that?
Yeah.
Great, I'll ask a second time if anybody has come to speak to the budget. Is the time? That's online or in person? And the third final time, anybody who came to speak on the budget, either in person or online? Now, we'll close the public comment and then I'll turn it over to Melanie.
Well, we're just going to ask you to do a brief synopsis of the April 3rd meeting where we went through the budget. All information is in the booklet. The booklet is now placed at the Pittsburgh Public Library with approval this evening. This budget and the Lemonster, what did I say?
Little scared, Superintendent.
I also put it on the Pittsburgh one. So we are going to ask to submit and push this forward to City Council if we can get approval this evening. So Mel, if you could do your synopsis of Lemonster's budget.
Is this, I don't know, is that on?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're just going to give you that full picture here with the pie chart where we broke it down during the full budget presentation. Just so you can see where we ended up on our proposed budget. If we go to the next line?
Matt? Does he want you to turn? I don't know. Steve, there's no clicker.
Thank you. Sorry. So the public schools, Lemonster Public Schools has put forth a net school spending budget. And we are asking for $62,426,431 in salaries and wages. We are asking for $31,536,913 in expenses. Indirect costs will be $5,635,657 for a full-in net school spending budget of $99,599,001. And we would like this, we would like to put this forward to the City Council.
Great, so anything else, Superintendent?
No, we're asking, we feel that this is a very responsible and reasonable request. And so we would like an approval to move forward.
I'll second. Any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
You know, that elementary schools are getting their playgrounds and that. Are we able to do anything in the outdoor spaces for school, either in next year's budget or any leftover budget? And then also, sitting on the equity and access to the arts grant and figuring out kids in the elementary school level while we're trying to rapidly grow our high school program? Means being that if we have a mentor school level for our banding for.
So the first piece, the outdoor spaces?
Yep.
Those do not fall under net school spending. Those are actually capital projects that Mel works her magic and works with the Department of Ed and everyone to get those projects done. So that is outside of this request. We are looking at different programming. Right now, Northwest is due to start any day. And then we are moving on to JA and then we are going to Priest. So we are covering the gamut. So anytime funding does become available, we've learned through the COVID process that outdoor space is really important for us. So we will be addressing all of that. We do ask that any of these requests come through the principals. So right now, it's been the elementaries because the outdoor spaces are so valuable. The playgrounds actually solve so many problems for us. It is a learning opportunity for our children. And as our principals come forward, a lot of them do grants. They look for other venues in which to pay for outdoor spaces. So as those pop up, Melanie finds ways to pay for those. And then on to your arts process. We've contributed a lot of money through to the arts this year, especially here at the high school. I would have to say, we want to make sure that our theater program and that theater, we use that space for everything. So we are upgrading it at a cost of about $90,000 right now, just for lighting and all of those things. Down in all the buildings, the budgeting for all of those fields come through the principals. So they have to manage what they can give with materials or not. Also, as you're found, you're on this committee, there's a grant opportunity, right? So we apply, we apply in Lemonster for every grant. We're not satisfied with just what we have for net school spending. We're constantly looking and we actually ask our teachers to continue to look and expand. So this year, as requests have come up, I don't know if we've denied very much. And so we are sitting in a place moving into FY24 that we are just growing leaps and bounds and feel that equitably, fine arts has been on my radar since the beginning. We've invested quite a bit of money.
Any other questions, Melissa? Go ahead, Eileen.
Yes, yep, yes. Nope, and actually there are candidates right now. Yep. For consideration. And that was a last year, so when you look through your budget, you'll see that it is still an open position. So that money has been brought forward to FY24. Yes. Yes, she's holding the same team. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I get a couple. Obviously, we're not voting on the amount because of the minimum. But as we talked about last meeting, as far as safety and listening to some of the comments today, and what's gone over the last couple of weeks, obviously, I have more concerns, not less concerns than what I did before about safety. So locking of bathrooms, events and things like that. What, do we have a breakdown of what, how much of this budget is going towards that? Whether it be school resource officers at full-time in the middle school?
Yes. Yep. It's broken down in there. As Paula was saying, each school budget has a safety line in their budget. And so the schools decide what they need for their buildings and they put that in their budget. So each school budget you'll see in there has a safety line and they've allocated some funding to it. We also have district-wide funds that, you know, we've got our safety committee who's working on all kinds of great ideas, what we can do moving forward for safety.
My understanding, as her, wasn't for school safety?
No, we're talking general fund.
General fund. So what we did put in next year's budget is, it's a heavy conversation with Lemonster PD is to have an additional resource officer. We're going to continue, but I understand, I mean, they have a shortage themselves. So they have to, you know, release a patrolman to the schools. But we think it's essential to have that person. We've also asked for our own safety liaison, which is a person that will just completely focus on this. Right now, Steven Ramoni, it's kind of a side position for him, trying to stay on top of all of this, where he formed a regional group of assistant superintendents and safety people together to say, what else can we do? We've had vulnerability studies from Homeland Security. There are quite a few grants coming out towards this. We want somebody to focus on this full-time and nothing else. And not be a part of, you know, with the police department, when things happen, they have to pull on their staff, completely understandable, right? This would be, besides the SRO that we've asked for, we've asked for the safety liaison. He would be a member of the Lemonster Public School system so that he could not be pulled and that this would be his main focus with his own, his or her own budget, to maintain whatever we need. But we have invested quite a bit through the maintenance line as well. So anything that has been brought to our attention, we've done this year.
And that position would build, kind of work on their own budget, too.
Yes.
And then we talked about the DEI director, but we haven't filled that in a year and a half, talking about locking of the bathrooms, right?
So I-
DEI director, $130,000 a year, maybe? Like, maybe that's a lot.
Two totally separate things.
I know, I'm just-
So our bathrooms, so we have many bathrooms. So I don't want to speak on behalf of Dr. Romano because bathrooms are not usually locked. If for some reason we try to monitor them in between as best we can with teachers and they have assigned duties, if for some reason somebody can't get there, sometimes the bathrooms are broken. You know, we're just, we're trying to monitor as best we can. We have several bathrooms. But to hire people for each one of them, I'd be willing to do that. But the staff here at the high school has said that they're willing to step up, whatever it takes to keep kids safe.
Yeah, I guess that's a separate discussion, but just trying to figure out how we can-
Yep, and you know what? Funding for both of those is not going to be an issue for us in FY24.
Program where they have home auditors hired separately.
Yes.
And it's one of the, always when it's during busy times. That's down a lot on school fights.
Correct.
Vaping in the bathrooms, things of that nature.
Yep, I agree. So that's part of the job of our dean and our SRO that walk the halls all day long. Very large campus for them to run around to all the multiple. Everybody is trying their best to keep everything safe and open. Every once in a while, we have to address safety concerns and we're going to continue to do that moving forward if we think that there is any ounce of a threat at any point in time.
Any other questions?
Just regarding transportation. I beg your pardon, did the city cover any of that?
All of it.
All of it.
Yes, we don't even, they've been so respectful about that, Bill. Yes.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. No, they've been wonderful.
Wonderful job. I have no complaints about that at all. They've done a nice job.
Natalie, also? All right, so we have a motion and second. All those in favor? Post. Thank you, Melanie.
Get ready for the next date. All right, I will let you know when the City Council schedules us, if anyone would like to attend. Okay. Jenny, if I could have you come forward with Mel? We need a vote this evening about school choice. The state asks us to send in an approval from the school committee every June 1st that we will continue with school choice.
Discussion? Any questions on the school choice guidelines that are in here? They appear to me to be the ones we've used as long as I've been around.
And it's something we monitor closely, closely, closely.
Was there a presentation that they were dying to deliver?
Um, no. No. No, but we're open for questions. There's always usually some questions about it.
I would say, and I think this is the thing I've heard this one past, and I know free from space and how much you- I've heard from, live in Lemonster and for one reason or another, move to another nearby community and want to keep their kids in Lemonster. I would like at some point for them to continue to be a trueist, that not just finish up the school year, but if you're then in Lemonster, you can stay in Lemonster if you choose to. Maybe that's something for-
Try to accommodate whenever possible. What we really do.
You moving?
She's down to one, so.
Any other comments, questions on those guidelines? Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
You can submit that to the state.
Thank you, vote.
Thank you.
We have the approval of the minutes from April 3rd. Has everybody had a chance to review those? If that's the case, I'll take a motion. Great, motion by Eileen in the second. By Josh. All those in favor? Great. Any new or old business?
Theater Department presentation.
My God, it's so good.
12th and 13th, you can buy tickets online. Excited to go. It's a good show. Boom, yep.
If I may, through the chair?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that parents are staying in close contact with their teacher right now with less than eight weeks to go. You want to make sure that your child is in good academic standard before the end of the year. You will be hearing from guidance counselors or teachers, maybe administration if your child is in jeopardy of failing one or more classes. Summer school opportunities are already being posted for some of that piece, but also for the enrichment. There's a lot of opportunities for students in Lemonster. So if we can move forward with that, just make sure you're staying in contact right now. It's really, really important. Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I just reiterate this? I'd like to have a bigger discussion about the safety stuff. I can share out with the group what some people have come to me anonymously with. But I think to reiterate our last meeting, we'd like to, or I'd like, I'd like to have a bigger discussion on that around school safety.
I'll be in the motion, but do we need a motion?
Go ahead, Josh.
I'd like to make a motion. Since I didn't have that discussion.
There a second? Any discussion on that motion?
I guess. All right, sorry.
It's on it, it's loud.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess what I want to caution people is that there's a lot of things that we can't talk specifically about because then that defeats the whole purpose of having security measures if everybody knows what those are and can figure out a way to circumvent them. So any discussion on safety, I think we have to be very cautious. I think that everybody on this committee, is my understanding from comments that people have made, are very much invested in making sure that all of our students and staff and our community and our properties are safe. And, you know, certainly we have various policies around certain behaviors that aren't tolerated. I think that, you know, there are certain conversations I'm willing to have and certain conversations I don't think that are appropriate. So you're asking for, in general, let's talk about safety. And I think it depends on what those safety measures are, whether I would support that conversation or not. So I just want to be transparent and you're making sort of a general motion. So it's really hard for me to weigh in on that based on some comments that were made at our last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, go ahead.
I just think overall, it doesn't have to be detailed, but a broad discussion. So at least parents in the community know that things are being done. Again, it doesn't have to be step by step or what we're doing in each location, but a general overview of what the district's doing. So that way comforts the parents, comforts, we didn't know that there are things out there that are, again, not in details, not only, but something that's out there so they know. Because I think from what I'm hearing, and I know probably what Greg's hearing is, people feel like they're left in the blind and they don't know what's going on.
And it's not even just the high school. We talk about the high school a lot, but I hear a lot of things coming out of the middle school that we don't really kind of falls on the radar. But there's concerning things happening there. And, you know, I'd love to hear from either the chief of police or the SRO to say, what measures have we not done to some degree, I guess? What things can we do to harden our schools, right? What, and I think we've talked about in the budget, but, you know, what else, what more can we do beyond that? I'd like to hear about reasons why we've locked certain bathrooms at times and the E-Wing or, yeah.
So if I may? Remind me?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if I may? So if I may, when, when things come up through our police department, those are things that we cannot discuss at this table and I, and I will not discuss them publicly. I, I would hope more so if we can come with a parameter that you are comfortable with. There are things that I, I will not share in public. I will not, and that is for the safety of students. If you have a question and there's confidentiality, it's true when it comes to children. I would hope that you would trust the schools to know that we, we are investing heavily. This is not, this is not a light subject for us at all. And, and we have put a lot of next year's budget purposefully into this basket to say, we need a hard look at this in schools. We are doing everything we can and everything unfortunately for us that we're told, because I speak to the chief minimally three to five times a week. We're ninety-nine percent on our best day. And, and that's the world. And so we're doing everything. Everybody has a pit in their stomach every single day. We watch the news, we talk about this, we strategize about it. And I want to have the faith of this committee to know that we are putting our best foot forward all the time. There are things that I, I cannot discuss, I will not discuss. But children's safety is not even a consideration for what we're doing. There's a reason for it. When parents ask me questions, I tell them to the best of their ability. But if we, that discussion really needs to be surrounded with some strong elements. So feel free to put questions together and I will be as forthcoming. You know, I tell you more than most do. But I speak to the Lemmonster Police most nights, most weekends, and definitely during the week.
And I think.
And without, sorry, sorry, I was just going to add, without getting too deep into the discussion, the safety discussion that we're talking about a motion on. As I have expressed in the past, my concerns about bathroom locking, my understanding was it has gotten better this year. But some of those things are on a case-by-case basis as well. A situation might occur that, you know, scenario that, that needs to be the case. But, you know, on a grander scale, yes, I am perfectly fine with that discussion.
And maybe as a committee, as a committee, we have a group that works on this. Maybe we have a representative from this committee.
Absolutely.
Join these meetings because at our meetings are the police chief, the captain. Captain Frayer is always there. We have fire there, we have OEM there, we have our cameras there. It is a team approach to safety. So I think maybe we invite. Yes, but I think a member.
I kind of wanted to just say something. I think the situation like this is honestly some sort of vague kind of communication because I think a lot of students are, are really upset about this type of thing. And I don't, I think I do, I do have faith that we are doing whatever we can and I really do like believe that, like completely with my heart. But, you know, these kids are, they're, they're very upset about it and they're frankly frightened. So I think that might, what might be good is like, say, say it's a situation, we can't talk about it. Maybe something categorical, just so kids at least are like aware that they are being protected, that this isn't just, and I know they know that there's probably reason, you know what I mean? They're like, just something kind of a general guideline, so.
We had that conversation.
We, we had a deep hourly conversation. Yeah.
You know, the thing is though, is a lot of kids don't get the opportunity I do. And I appreciate you for, like I said, I really think that we are doing what we can and I, I really appreciate that. I think that, I just think that like maybe some vague communication with the student body would really be the key word.
Well, I appreciate that, that statement, but, and I want to, I want to react to or respond to the superintendent. It's not about an issue of us not having faith or my motion to not have faith in what's being done. It's just impossible for us to provide any sort of oversight without asking questions. And we need to ask questions.
And I'm fine with asking questions, but at some point.
Get confused, it's not.
No, 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 I get that. That's why I think if we had representation from this committee on our safety team, which is, which is a part of this entire city, I think that would help make the communication a little bit clear because when I'm told I cannot communicate these things, I'm not going to. So I really do think that as a body, you have a place at that table and I think it's very important, especially with what's going on right now. And I think amongst yourselves, if you could have that conversation, then I wouldn't be crossing any lines. Yeah, yeah, I think that. I would say just send those over to Steve if you don't mind, because he helps organize that, that regional time and the city time.
I was just going to say, I think that there's also some, you know, legalities that, you know, since a lot of these things might involve criminal aspects of it that we can't talk.
I don't think any of us have asked for the details. I think we just need to, I mean, the way that things were communicated the second time in that discussion that day, I think we're, we're great. Like, but the, the way it was presented, I think, to kids and parents alike was not effective. And it just created more fear, more anxiety and all that.
And honestly, I'm going to say, I don't think that that's not going to happen again because when you're faced with it so quickly as we were the last time. And all we were doing in the last situation was, we had information, not about our place, but it wasn't going to, we, we were taking a stance real quickly in about fifteen minutes to say, it's not coming in here. What can we do right now just to make sure? And so it gets heightened and then all of a sudden, two thousand people walk into a building and you go, okay, it's, it's here. So I get, I understand what you're saying, but when you're sort of in it, it's, the world is very hyped right now.
I think we're getting close to on actually having the discussion that is motioned for. So.
But I think having somebody on that.
I was going to say, I would much rather see someone be on the committee where information is kept in a bit more of a controlled setting and environment than have it be a public meeting in a public forum and then something slips inadvertently or is manipulated. And then, you know, if, if after that, then we need another larger meeting with some protocols in place, fine, but I would rather start in the smaller.
That feels good.
It's, it's our job to reassure the public, right? That their kids are safe, right? And, and, but, so we've got to find a way that even if we have somebody on the committee in there, Josh or Eileen or whomever, that they have a way to be able to communicate things that were discussed in a way that is not sensitive in nature, that's at a high level, that doesn't talk about, that identifies children or whatever this case may be. We've got to be able to use that information in a way that can reassure parents without disclosing information that's private. That's my feel.
I appreciate that. Yep.
Sorry, Matt.
No, we talked that day, we were together pretty much all day.
Yeah, rather than it be explained as one thing and then we thought of it together.
Yeah.
Issue being handled, easy to approach, follow.
But seeing that too, you're kind of doing like an exit interview as you're transitioning. Maybe this is a good topic to bring up with the principal or the student resource officer that you're picking up these vibes from your classmates and your peers and you think starting soon or starting for next year, going into it, what you can discuss at the beginning of the year is a good.
That's, that's a good idea.
So we have a motion by Greg and a second by Josh for a safety presentation. All those in favor? All those post? Looked like it was four to four.
Oh.
It was.
You mean you're all for it?
Someone abstained?
People aren't for it.
It was half and half.
I would rather see another step prior to a public meeting.
All right, so let me just say this about that. First of all, I, I never have a problem communicating, telling people what's going on because I think it's worse not to tell people what's going on. I mean, you don't have to tell me to see the detail, but if you don't, don't make it up. There was an incident in one of the other school systems last week and there's rumors about stuff that was like incomprehensible. I'm thinking this, that somebody didn't do a control part. So people are going to get the information, they're even going to get it and it's going to come from us or people are going to make it up. And it's, and, and that's worse because now you end up responding, reacting to that. And so, and in future, I think what should happen is if there's an incident, every member of the school committee should get a phone call explaining what's going on. Not in, not in email or text or anything, just here's what's going on. As fast as we can get to the phone to tell you what's going on. So that, that way everybody knows. Because what's going to happen is you're all going to get texts and.
So my first, so the first thing I ever do is I contact the.
Yeah, so we should let you know what's going on. And if we don't know anything, it's like, hey, we don't know what's really going on yet, but we'll let you know when we know. At least you know that because what's going to happen is you'll be at the grocery store before, and you'll know, they'll know something's going on before you do if they don't tell you. Or people are going to start texting like, and then you get like, geez, I don't know what's going on.
If we're going to have somebody on this safety committee that the superintendent was talking about, that could be the first phone call and they could make the phone calls out to everybody else theoretically.
Somebody, and if they can't, but I'm just saying that. And the other thing is, I remember, and I was thinking back when I was listening, when we first put school resource offices into schools, people didn't want them. And they, and I remember the superintendent at the time and some of the principals were like, no, because why would you do that? Because people are going to think we have a problem. And I said, we don't have a problem. This is, this is something totally different and school resource officers aren't security guards in schools, they're built related, they have a specific purpose to be in the schools. And when you explain that, they're like, oh, yeah. Well, I guarantee if we try to pull school, school resources offices out of the system right now, people would really be upset because they understood the value of having a school resource office and what their purpose really was. And, and so sometimes it isn't always like, oh, we can't say anything because people are going to think it's an unsafe school. No, it's when you don't say anything that they're going to think it's an unsafe school. They want to see that if something happens, that we did something. We took a stand on something and we're not going to tolerate it or we did what we're supposed to do. And we hope people approve of what we did. So it's, it's, I think the first thing, and a little bit of a backup is when there is a situation, we just need to let you know as much as we know when we know. It's a text, then it's a text, a group text. There's nothing in violation of the open meeting law, but at least, at least you'll know. So when you start, you're going to, immediate, your phones are going to light up. So I'd rather be the person telling you what's really going on so that you can say, sit tight, situations under control, that's not what's going on, can't tell you much. But, and I just think that people will be much, that the, the community would be much more supportive if we just upfront with them. Because they expect that in six thousand students at the school, something's going to happen. I mean, things happen during the day, they happen everywhere. They happen in businesses, hospitals, all over the place. But if you don't tell them and give them some information and act like nothing happened, then what happens is they just, you create that vacuum, you're going to make it up and then think that they don't trust us because we didn't tell them. I mean, honestly, I think we have a good safety plan. Our biggest problem is, was when something does happen, even if it's a little thing, the parents show up. So we, we, right, well, they get, you know, they, I want to get my kid out of there, right? That's the first natural instinct as a parent. So we've even set up areas that we will make sure that parents show up, we'll know where they are, we can have somebody communicating with them, so we can, because we know that's going to happen. So the plan's in place, do a good job. And so, yeah, I, I, you know, I think one of the big things would help is we immediately communicated, whatever is, once we have you on the loop, on the, on a, a text loop, we could just text every twenty minutes. Okay.
That's what it was, yes.
So somebody that voted against it would have to.
Dean voted?
No, no, I voted.
No, he voted.
I voted.
He voted, he voted affirmative.
It was a four, that's why it's four-four. And that was just about a conversation.
So somebody that voted against it would have to ask for a re, reconsideration. It's somebody before the floor.
Then, then we can bring this motion forward if we feel like.
We would, so if, if, if the concern that I, the reason that I brought this for, right, is, is the concern that parents feel a little bit left in the dark and we need to create a little bit more transparency around our safety? And how is going to have somebody from the school committee on the safety group without being able to communicate some of those safety initiatives? And so I'm, I'm okay with, let's start with putting somebody on the safety board, whatever it is. And let's all also agree that at the next meeting, we'll, we'll have a discussion around that and maybe the person that's on the safety committee can kind of help facilitate that presentation.
Oversight of the superintendent, which is accurate. So this puts a person from our committee into that group, but also in an emergency, that could be a person to help the administrative office in communicating to school committee members as sort of a backup.
I honestly, I mean, honestly, Melissa, I, I don't have prob, I mean, I can do that part. I can have somebody do, I can have one of the police officers do it. Typically in a fire situation, we'll assign somebody to it and they'll let.
Instead of manager.
No, it, it, we've got a system in place, so it, it's just, I said it and I'll say it again. This is an institution to learn. We will do everything and these teachers will do and guidance counselors, custodian, everybody, up, down, top, bottom, will do anything to make sure a student succeeds. Even when life's not so good and there's problems, mental health issue, whatever it is, they will do anything to help them out. But we won't tolerate people that come in and, and disrupt the learning environment. Now, listen, this is school, things happen, but it has, this has, these have to be safe buildings. And everything, and, and when it's not, then we have to take action, I think we have. But that's the message, I think, we, we stated at the very beginning of the year, we need to restate along the way, say, we'll do anything, anything. People have problems like their setbacks, their family problems, mental illness, whatever. Hey, no better place than right here. This is the place that can help turn lives around. So go ahead, you first and then Seth.
So Greg, I wanted just to clarify that what I heard you asking for is just a general discussion of what we're doing, et cetera, et cetera. But from the discussion that I've been hearing, what it sounds like, what you really want is some kind of policy about how do we get the word out? So that seems like that might be a more of a policy committee question where we discuss, how do we communicate?
Well, I, the, the bottom, the, the main thing is that how do we, how do we create trust and transparent, trust with parents and families in the, in our community, right? And have transparency in what we do and the actions that we take. So transparency in our safety plans, right? Even, even like after an incident at work, we do a reflection, right? We have, we meet and say, here's, we got information that came from the police. We, you know, it didn't get disseminated down to everybody that needs to be involved. Next time out, we're going to make sure that when the, you know, lieutenant or something sends out an email, it goes to this group of people and not just that. Like, that's transparency, that's honesty, that creates trust. And I, this is, that's how I feel like we need to move forward, is we need to talk through these things out loud, how we could have done them better and then, you know, what we're going to do better in the future.
Yeah, so kind of.
But is that, I know.
So I am understanding what you're saying, but as Paulo was saying, a lot of those safety concerns get into, you know, our response has to be limited, how much we tell people so that they don't know exactly.
Yeah, and I don't even know the situation, but I just described in a way that.
Important that we communicate. Don't get me wrong, I, but I think it, we need a procedure to say, hey, this is, you know.
So we have those. So what I want you to understand is we have those. We've worked with the Lemmonster Police and Lemmonster Fire. We have those procedures, we have those protocols. The mayor knows that literally he is the CEO. If things go awry, he's going to be the commander in chief, right? So when things happen, we know. Police come in, they take, they take over from us or the Lemmonster Fire take over from us. Mayor is always in communication with them. I can text him and I have at like three, four, because he's up at three, as everybody knows.
Is that, is that, I mean, are you worried? Let me kind of, because.
What parents know, they want to know what parents know.
I just said, we have, we had students in here that did belong here. They would belong, some, they belonged in another, they wanted to learn, they belonged in another environment. Because this wasn't working for the people that work in these buildings and it wasn't working for them. So they, they, so our job is to make, right? Parents' job is to make sure they're rested, fed and ready to learn. So leave them off the curve. It's our responsibility to make sure they're safe when they're here and that they get a good education. And so I think the safest thing, and maybe we should have said it, and just look at, we have some students in here that didn't belong here, they just didn't. And they're going to have to, we're going to have to find another environment for them to learn in. But again, I understand, in superintendent's world, they think that's a reflection on them in the system because I, maybe I do, and it's not. It's not at all. But, you know, we want, we don't want parents, you know, to, to, there are some new kids in this building today, today or yesterday was their first day. They're like thrilled. They didn't hear any bad things about us. And so sometimes we're afraid collectively, we're afraid because we don't want people to think this isn't a good school system or isn't a good school system and it is. So you're afraid, you're like, geez, what will people think? You know what I mean? So i- i- in essence, I, I think, we just say, an incident happened and, you know, we realized that we've given every opportunity to these students to learn because this is where you learn. So if these buildings are far.
It takes time to get that information.
They didn't do it and we had to make some decisions that are longer in this building to learn, but we're gonna help them learn in a different environment. But we have to do it because we have two thousand people in this building that we see. And this is a learning environment.
I think.
But it's much more than that. For a lot of students, it's home.
I think my question is, is gonna ease the tension. I think even if it's really vague, it can be as big as we wanted to.
No, it's never gonna be. So that's what happened with us, right? So Matt stayed with me, tried to communicate to me that whole day about where the students were. And I said, I don't have enough information at this point to communicate clearly and enough to calm enough people. So when I have that information, right, that's what we talked about. And he stayed with me all day and I said, when I have enough information, I will let people know. But we don't just act on, you know, theory and whatever.
Have the answers, just a conversation telling people we don't have the answers, just something so people feel listened to.
We run a good school system here. We have really dedicated employees that work up and down. And this is a place to learn and if you come here and you wanna learn or maybe you have a problem, but, and the message is, but if you can't function in this environment, you're gonna have to go. Simple as that. I don't, you know, and so you can just assume, you can just assume that if somebody isn't here, I guess, without saying their name, that everybody tried everything they could and it's for the safety of people in this building that we can't keep them in here anymore.
My question is.
No, 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 no.
My question is.
As soon as possible, at some point, there has to be that message that goes out.
I had it up.
And, and it says, go ahead, Sal.
No, I was wondering, why couldn't we make?
Anybody's had a discussion, this is actually a good thing.
I was wondering, we're talking about putting people on the safety, why couldn't we make safety a subcommittee?
That's actually a great idea.
Why wouldn't we make that a, then that's.
I think that's important.
No, 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 let's hear it.
Well, I'm just thinking of a subcommittee for safety.
Eileen's paid, we, we can do something.
Yeah, yeah, put that on the business list.
Just transparency. In general, the bathroom should be open. However, if there's something going on and all of a sudden the bathrooms need to be closed, people need to understand that there's a good reason for that, even if we're not able to communicate it. And it wasn't like the bathrooms were closed forever. Arrangements were made so children, students, teens, whatever, could go to the bathroom if they needed to, but they needed to ensure people's safety along the way.
We weren't told that would be till the end of the week though, that's the only thing, so I, it's.
Little things like that, that I'm not saying, but I know we're trying to.
There are little things that, it's just, it's easy that, that like, oh, this is only for the week, you know? And I, I don't.
It's also scary for high school students to hear that and not know why.
Bedlocked, discussion anyways.
And I wrote it by walking in.
Right, yeah, I know, we were good.
No, it's been very, very helpful perspective, Dean, and I think all of us are committed to safety. And I think, you know, certainly Sal.
I think that's a great idea.
It's a good suggestion and, you know, whether it's one or two people on the safety committee to liaise on with a subgroup, I think very helpful.
It can, see Matt, if, if we would have just said, hey, you know what? There were few people ruining it for everybody up here. So temporarily, we're gonna go, you know, it's gonna be some agony involved and some.
And you know, we're human, I don't blame anyone individually, it's a hard situation, you know? I just think that we do what we can and I think we make it clear that even if we can't tell them the answers, we tell them we're doing what we can. You know what I mean?
And, and.
Not so much that the bathroom might be an issue, but just that we know is in case there's a situation.
All right, so Melissa, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, it would have to be, to take another vote. So it would have to be, you would have to vote, make the motion to take it, to reconsider the vote. That's what you could do if you wanted.
But I voted against it, do I?
That's why.
Only, only somebody gets that.
Make the motion to reconsider it.
Not discuss.
All right, I don't think it's a big deal if people have a vote. I think we've already had discussion. It's already done. So at the next meeting, let me just check just on the technical parts of the security part to see whether or not we can go to executive session, discuss strategy. Just maybe that's covered under the law and we bring in the police chief and our team of people. And when there was a, the agent's team, everybody does something and we, yeah, we just spend some time talking about it.
And then we can talk about a communication plan maybe.
And then we go, and, and you're right, I mean, we should be on the phone letting you know what's going on, not leaving it flowing. So we're, you're probably hearing from more people than.
Oh, yeah.
Than us, so let's, let's. Let me find that out. I, I, I think you'd be pretty happy. Test scenarios and you know, have the perfect scenario when something happens. We've had other situations where they've, I've watched the whole thing, you know, at the hospital for instance, in a complete lockdown. Yeah, that's a big place. All here, it's other schools, that, that's just one, like, what, what building? I didn't know there was anybody in that building or on that floor. All of a sudden, you know, you realize this is same thing, a couple thousand people up there at a time and patients coming in. Hospital, you've gotta divert people to other emergency rooms in a complete lockdown scenario. And again, what we did there is just kept communicating with them before. On, here's what's going on, can't leave. What do you mean, I can't, I gotta pick up my kid, can't leave. You know, what's in, nobody's out. For a short amount of time, once we feel better, we can stop letting people out and people were fine. So we'll, we'll, that, that needs to, we need to do a better job of that. And again, when all this is going on, superintendent's busy, she's got a million people talking to her and, you know, so we'll, we'll, we'll get it. It's a, it's a, it's, it's just getting better at what we do, you know? So the system's in place, we just got a few little, you know, loose ends that we, we gotta get better. But I'm very con- I gotta say, I'm very confident in the team that we have working with the city and the school department that if for some reason something happened, not something huge, but if something did.
Yeah.
Too fast.
We have, we have some of the trainers, when, some of the exercises we do in our schools that we use are our people training these other people that come in during the summer for training. They're, they're the trainers that are training other people. That was that to say every scenario could go perfect? No, but we take that into consideration, you know? So let me try that and see, see how that works. Did we have our cities, our, um, our attorney here? To update on the cases? All right, can we get him for next meeting? That way we'll do it at the same time, get an update. I don't know if there are any legal cases, but we do it with the city council. We have a city solicitor going and kinda update on any, any cases.
Yeah, we need an executive session anyways at the next one.
Things that, that are on there, just because really it's a school committee, you're, you're gonna be the one and the superintendent acting on behalf of, but. You need to know what these.
Yes.
That was correct. Oh, I didn't, I didn't know if you did a, Mr. Borghardt passed away and Mr. Hathaway, did a moment of silence.
No, we did not do that. Yeah, his funeral's tomorrow.
Yeah, just a pilgrim church guy.
Yeah.
Keith, Keith is here, the Keith Altman pastor.
Yeah.
To the, the, the church.
Should be well attended.
Anyway, just a moment of silence, two good people, hardcore Leamester, you know, just nice people. So just a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Their families are very appreciative. I, I posted on Facebook and all of a sudden, people of every generation, you know, you teach it for thirty, forty years, affects a lot of people. And you'd be surprised, people like, and their families are very appreciative to hear that response.
I had him.
Mr. Borghardt? All right, um, all in favor? Those opposed? You can stay here and.